Hello, hey, welcome, folks. My name is Tom Trussor. I'm the lead organizer of something called the TIF Illumination Project, which is a bunch of people using data, investigative journalism, and graphic design, and community organizing to interrogate these things called TIFs, tax increment, financing districts. We've been doing it for 11 years. Now, I say TIFs are racist and corrupting. Maybe you haven't reached that conclusion, too. But people from around the country have reached out to me to help them unravel the TIF mystery. And one of those people is on this call today, Rob Abone. Hello, Rob.
How you doing?
All right. Yes, thank you for being with us. So Rob is a councilperson. He represents the 5th Ward of the city of Berwyn, Illinois. And so I want to just basically pass the mic to you, Rob, and help us understand a little bit about your background in this campaign that you got involved with around TIFs in your town, if you would.
Yeah, thank you so much, Tom, for having me and for all the work that you do across the country. It's so important for you not only to illuminate and educate folks on this issue, but also help them, you know, find their lane and how they can take action as well in their communities. So I started off my journey, and we were just talking about this a while ago. 2021 was a really different time, right? We're in the middle of a pandemic. We were also experiencing civil unrest across the country with the Black Lives Matter movement. And it was very active in Cicero and Berwyn as well. Youth activists and organizers were coming together to talk about racial equity and talk about issues that really mattered to them, like housing justice, education, policing in their communities. And it was a time that I think, for myself, it kind of hit a moment where I had to make a decision. I had, at that time, been working in the nonprofit sector for almost 10 years. Started my career working with youth and youth development. But I was also doing organizing in my own community at that time. And I was also a sitting school board member. And I had a decision to make in that moment of, you know, do I look at all these young people in my community and applaud them for their engagement, pat them on the back, and then go home, back to my own life, and just call it a day and just continue what I'm doing? Or do I take a lead from them and really, in the ways that they've inspired me, follow the impact and get more involved and run for office in a city where there's just so many things that we need to do to support, you know, multiracial working class folks, as well as just improve the quality of life of our neighborhood? And so I decided to run for office in the 5th Ward, run for city council. And my campaign was based off of racial equity. We ran off of fighting for, once again, housing justice, fighting for youth opportunities, and making sure that the city was doing things and operating in a way that was inclusive for everybody. And so throughout that process, a project came up at City Hall called the Ridge Land Estates Project. It was connected to a TIF district in which they were gonna build 29 homes. And the fact that they were gonna use a TIF district and do it right across the street from a middle school, where 70% of the students at that school couldn't afford to buy those homes, probably 85% of the students and their families couldn't afford to buy the homes they were about to build. It really activated me and several other residents to take action. And so it wasn't my first battle against TIFs in my community. I could talk more about my time on the school board as well. But it was an eye-opener that they were gonna start, you know, they kind of moved away from commercial development, and they were like getting into the residential side of things with TIFs. And I feel like they took it too far in that moment. And so the battle sort of began at the zoning committee, right? When they're trying to change it to residential. And it was a big project. I mean, it was gonna be 29 homes. So this was millions and millions of dollars in terms of investment.
So how did you find me?
Yeah, so that's a great question. Originally, when I was on the school board, I, without going into too much details, right, to respect, you know, different rules and regulations, it was brought to us to increase a TIF district that had already been around for 20-something years. So that means this TIF existed when I was a kid, Tom, growing up in this community, right? And over the years, seeing what sort of development occurred on this road, it really didn't impress me in terms of what they were saying the TIF was gonna do, right? Build, create jobs, increase economic development and vitality in the community. 20 years had passed, and they were justifying continuing the TIF because there was still blight. And in my head, I couldn't wrap my head around that, right? I was just like, we had 20-something years to do something on this road that isn't huge. Berwyn's really small. It's about 55,000 people. But we're one of the most densely populated cities in the state of Illinois. And so you could drive through us in about 5, 10 minutes. And so the fact that this stretch of road here was still in need of, you know, funding that should have went to schools, to libraries, to parks, to do, you know, basically construction work to make it look nicer, right? That, you know, they still needed another 11 years. And I was just, you know, really frustrated by this. It sort of came out of nowhere, as most of these things do. I was a new board member, and it felt like I didn't even have any education on this issue. And so I looked up some stuff, and I found, I stumbled upon, you know, your work and your organization. It was too late. It was already gonna be voted on. So I went to the meeting. I voted against it because I felt like, you know, why another 11 years? And who is this economic development for in a community where, at the time, 70-something percent of the students in both elementary school districts, their families came from low-income housing and low-income families? That, you know, why aren't we just investing in our schools? Why aren't we just investing in our children? Why aren't we investing in the people who are here now instead of focusing in on, you know, who you want to bring into the community and to make it better? And so there's another wrinkle to this, Tom, where the organization that works on the TIFs in the community and does our economic development also has a campaign called Why Berwyn? And for years, Why Berwyn was a marketing campaign to get folks to move to Berwyn from other parts of Chicago and surrounding areas. And if you look closely at the history of Why Berwyn and the neighborhoods that they decided to have advertisements in and these billboards in, you know, to move to Berwyn, and you did any studying of like, you know, redlining or gentrification in school, you would see that it sort of followed a pattern. So by the time we got to this moment, Tom, we were getting, I was seeing billboards and ads for Why Berwyn in the West Loop, you know, at Ogilvy Station, right? One of the biggest arteries for transportation for folks getting downtown to jobs and to their professions. And so it's just, and commercials too, not just a picture, right? Like full-on commercials. So we're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on this. It could be going, once again, to students' education. And so it was really frustrating. I voted against it. I experienced some retaliation, some political violence because of that, because I stepped up and did that. And I think that that was something that sort of started to spark my energy and curiosity of like, well, what's really going on here? And this happened with the housing project. I reached out to some of my organizing friends, and they let me know about you and your work that you were doing, and it kind of all pieced together. And I was like, oh, like, I looked him up earlier, and I saw some stuff, but I couldn't get in touch with him yet because it just happened so quickly. And they're like, well, we have his contact. And that's when we brought you in to do the education session in the community to really let people know what a TIF is actually.
So now we're, you know, basically on March 10th, 2021, I did what is called the TIF Illumination for Rob and his people. Being COVID, it was online, and I think there were 75 people, or at least on the call. So these are people sitting in their homes in front of their screens, watching me go through a PowerPoint deck, explaining, first of all, what is a TIF? Why should you care? And some of the problems that a TIF brings to you, regardless of what community you're in. But then what we do with all TIF illuminations is make it personal for the place we were in. So at that point, we were in Berwyn, speaking to the people of Berwyn. And at that point, there were four TIFs alive in your community. Two had been sunsetted. So there were a total of six in the life of Berwyn. And what was on the table was this thing, as Rob has said, called the Ridgeway TIF, or the project that wanted to be created. This would have been a new TIF, a fifth TIF, if you will, to join the four TIFs already in existence. And it was wanting to raise and send $15.5 million. That's the number that I was looking for. I just saw a paper over here. Reminded myself, 15.5 mil. And let's be clear about that. That's property tax dollars that would be used to repay the developer and to do the work, whether it's lay a new sewer or whatever they had in mind. But that's $15.5 million that would not go to the people of Berwyn for their central services, including, obviously, your schools. So that's what happened. So we did this little PowerPoint presentation. And what was the vibe? What do you think? What happened as a result of it, or what feedback did you get?
No, it was really powerful. I mean, you know, to transport myself back into time back then, you know, I think we upset a lot of people, like we upset a lot of people with power or who had been in proximity to power or decision-making around economic development. We definitely got under their skin there. So the agitation was happening. But also just the education and people being able to better understand, like, I've heard about this before, you know, I've heard about this TIF district, that TIF district. And I never knew what it was really meant to do, you know, I've heard this, I've heard that. And I think, like, having that dialogue, you know, not only getting the education, but people talking in the chat, people asking questions, I think it just allowed folks to really dive deeper into an issue that impacts their everyday lives. But for most people, it's just one of the wonkiest things that you're gonna be impacted by in terms of public life. Like, nobody knows what a TIF was. I remember I was in a fellowship at the time when I made my vote program. At the time that I made my vote on the school board, and I asked about 15 people in my fellowship who were all active in community and doing organizing work, and nobody can tell me what a TIF was. When I voted against the TIF as a school board member, barely anybody on the school board could tell me what a TIF was that was voting for it, right? So I think that, like, I think that this education is really needed, the civic education, like focusing on civic literacy. And so I think that was like the foundation for folks to be able to build, you know, some momentum and confidence around engaging their neighbors on this issue. And then we ended up hitting the streets after that. If you'd like me to share a little?
Yeah, I remember we included a commitment card so that attendees could actually tell you whether they were down for working with you.
Yeah, so I think that was-
I think we're gonna have a meeting like the next Saturday morning or something.
Yeah, that was really helpful. So we were able to, right away, just pull people in who were moved or interested or activated because of the training, right into, hey, let's take action together. And so we reached out to all those folks. We got out together. We door-knocked around where development was gonna happen around the school as well. We had about six, seven, eight volunteers out there. And we walked for several hours that day, and we just knocked on doors. We had little flyers. There wasn't anything crazy. We didn't have any huge, you know, resources with us, except the information of what was happening and some links for people to look into it further. And residents had no idea this was happening. People that lived right next to the development didn't even know this was gonna happen. And so like, I think what was also, you know, sort of a realization of ours is that, like, you know, there's folks that are gonna be deeply impacted by this that weren't even brought into this conversation, not even told, hey, this is gonna happen in two months, right? Forget like having a community meeting and sharing what a TIF is and hey, we're gonna build these homes and getting feedback. There is people that were just like, I didn't, I, this building's been here forever. I didn't know something even, you know, someone even bought it or someone was gonna even do work with it. And so I think that lack of transparency from the city was also, you know, something that people were frustrated about. And I think that moved folks to get out there and come out and speak up at the zoning meeting that was happening. Because this space was an industrial area, they needed to change the zoning over to residential. And that was the next call to action, right? We told people, come out if you have questions about this, if you're frustrated, if you, you know, if you are upset, if this impacts you, right? Like, come out and speak your mind. And we had about like 30 to 40 people come.
30 to 40, right? And this is in a time of COVID, we gotta remember.
Right.
The people are coming out because they're angry and energized, and they probably had a bunch of questions.
Yeah. And so we're all masked up. It's like you said, COVID time, and people are waiting and trying to come in and ask questions about it. And, you know, we spoke. A couple of us went up there too. And this is where I told the city, like, and as a zoning committee, I'm like, this is city-sponsored gentrification. I mean, these homes were gonna, these 29 homes were also gonna be built at all market value. There was no mixed, you know, homes being built in there, no affordable housing. And so when you look at our demographics as a city, and 80% of the people who lived in Berwyn at that moment couldn't afford to buy these homes, like, who are you building these for at the same time? And so that was a big moment. A lot of people came out. A lot of folks were upset. And shortly after that happened, the developer all of a sudden didn't want it to be in a TIF district. That was what we were told.
So the punchline is, you won?
I think, I think from the pressure, yeah, from people coming out and showing up and asking more questions, I, you know, I think that they'll never give us that win. They'll never say, oh, we did it because we listened to the community, which would be such a great way to govern. But they sort of look at it as, you know, the developer, you know, didn't want it in the first place, which in my mind then makes us, makes me feel like the city was incompetent because they spent $50,000 that we wasted on creating this TIF when the developer didn't even wanna want it at the end of the day. So developer ends up saying, we don't want the TIF. They end up taking that, that, those 29, right? Pins out of the TIF district, which makes the TIF district really in limbo because there's no other property, as I shared earlier, in that district. And the developer moves on with their project. Around several months after that, the market shifted, and things weren't as great anymore. And all of a sudden, the developer wanted to sell the property. And so they ended up not building anything. And, you know, it was gonna be bad for us, right? They raised the property in the ground. They knocked down tons of trees. They were gonna build the homes, one home at a time, as folks were gonna buy them. And this was all gonna happen right next door to a school, like, middle school in our community, for probably years, right, of time. And so they ended up not going through with it and wanting to sell it. And I think that was, you know, it was great that that happened. And like I said, I think all of this came together because community members got involved, because people, real people at the doors were chatting with their neighbors and getting connected and educating each other and building those relationships. And, you know, we came together and built collective power around an issue that really is important to our community and in the ways that TIFs intersect with so many different things. And so I think, I think it was really a really powerful moment for us.
Well, you used one of my favorite words, "power." You know, this work is about how did the powerless get power? And part of the answer is through good information and good base building, good organizing, good old-fashioned people-to-people. You know, even with this, all this high-tech stuff, you know, we're meeting via technology right now. But there's no substitute for getting people in a room, getting them on the same page, and then hitting the streets. Now, the developer may have said he changed his mind, but I don't believe that. I think he saw this beehive that he put, that was buzzing all these bees around there. And he said, I'm gonna go pick some cherries somewhere else. This is too much for me. So that's 15.5 million that remained, you know, it wasn't touched. So, you know, there could be other things coming down the pike, but at least that, it didn't happen for these 29 homes, as you say. You know, and as you pointed out in your narrative about they were gonna knock down trees and they're gonna do it one house at a time. It's nonsense. It's crazy. But it's kind of indicative of this fever that hits the TIF world, Tifitis, I call it, where the normal planning, any kind of planning for justice, any kind of thoughtful planning for our community, like asking people, well, what do you all need over there in that part of Berwyn? I mean, none of that happens. And all of a sudden, everything is done for the developer. So we're gonna knock the buildings down. We don't really have a plan, but we're just gonna start, you know, because then we'll make it real. And then, as you said, the market shifted. So here's the thing, if you had lost or if you had never organized, the TIF would have happened. He would have knocked the trees down and continued all that work, maybe built one building, and then belly up. So now you've got kind of an abandoned crappy site. And he'll sell the property for a song, and then it's somebody else's, you know, issue. And we see this all across America.
Yeah. But as you mentioned, when all of your solutions to problems are market-driven, are development-focused, right, are all about, let's make more money, let's make a profit, then you're not thinking about giving this property to a park or to a school or to an organization?
So in the video, when you said that, I'm gonna have exclamation marks come popping out of your head because that's such a great point. And my friend, it's like, what these TIFs are indicative of across America is that our cities have become back-end the functionaries of the real estate business. So it's almost like the purpose of our cities is to grease these real estate deals, for good or ill. It's almost who gets to the table first, who has the right lawyer, who pays off the mayor? In this case, the developer gave your mayor $1,000. That's chump change. But it often follows it. That's how these guys get the air of the mayor or other elected officials. And the next thing you know, they're kind of driving the bus. So instead of, instead of the city of Berwyn or the city of Chicago or the city of Kansas City, Louisville, many of the places I've worked, instead of them having some kind of rational five-year plan for economic justice that's based on the real needs of the people, it's just one real estate deal after another driven by clout and fueled by TIFs. And what we just heard here is one story of literally thousands of stories across America, but this one didn't happen.
Yeah.
So we say thank you, Rob, and all your neighbors. So here it is now, 2024. What's going on with you? I understand you're running for office again. What's on your plate, you know, as you move, you know, thinking about your next year? And what's going on in Berwyn?
Yeah, that's a great question. And thank you so much for all the work that you put in and the ways in which you supported us and bringing that expertise too. I think that it was also just to take one little step back, if I can, a real good example about how lived experience and expertise can come together when it comes to building, like, shared knowledge around something to make a difference. And so I really appreciate what you brought to the table and legitimizing our fight. Because for years, I think, you know, folks who have stood up or spoken out have just been kind of diminished and seen, oh, you're being extreme or you're being this or you're being that. And so I think your project and your body of work sort of shut them up a little bit, you know? And they're, hey, well, you know, he's at the table, and they're working together, and they're researching and looking into what we're doing. I think that's helpful. So I think that, you know, for folks that are doing this across the country, reach out to Tom or build, you know, that data with folks that you can work with in your community so that you have that as well. You have the facts, you have the data. And then you can also bring forward the lived experience that is so important when it comes to these projects that are devastating sometimes to people's lives and really extract so much wealth from our communities across the country. And so really just wanted to say thank you as well for all of that.
Well, thanks again, Rob. So, you know, we just have a few minutes left. Just tell the folks, you know, what's on your plate for, you know, for your work, you know, as an elected official, what's going on with you in Berwyn?
Yeah, so thank you so much. So I'm running again for a second term in 5th Ward in Berwyn. And really, you know, my first, my first four years, I really tried to focus on broadening the civic ecosystem. And what that means to me is just like, how do we break this table? And how do we keep breaking it and keep rebuilding it with each other over time? Because we have to continue to learn where our gaps are and how we can be more and more inclusive in our communities to understand really that, you know, if we help folks and we support folks and we work with folks, there are most of need. We're helping all of us. We're strengthening our social fabric. We're strengthening the vitality of our community. And we're doing, you know, good work, good moral work. And so really just trying to get more folks involved because our community, because of the way things have been ran, because it's been so market-driven, so special interest-driven with real estate, with development. We're called the City of Homes in Berwyn, so that's like their commodity, right? And I think that folks, over the years of dealing with that and also experiencing, you know, Berwyn is also very much a mini machine, a mini daily machine out here in the suburbs of Chicago. And so I think that type of generational trauma, that type of like community trauma when it comes to getting involved in civic life is real. And some people just rather not even deal with it and go on with their own day. But I think what I've realized is that in order to change policy, I have to shift culture too. And I have to be a part of that shift. And so just modeling different ways to collaborate with community, trying to regain trust. You know, I'm a community member. Obviously, I lived here most of my life. But I still feel like as a leader, I need to go out there and have integrity and have folks create opportunities for folks to build trust with me, but also with each other so that we can show up strong when things like this happen. And hopefully, we get to a point where we're not having to show up strong when things like this happen, but we're at the table with each other, solving problems. And so over those last two years, I brought participatory budgeting to Berwyn for the first time. We've never had it here as a model to be able to demonstrate what a participatory democratic process can look like when it comes to, you know, our funds and how we use them. And I've just been trying to have that, you know, that collaborative spirit as a leader and be more of a facilitator in my neighborhood around different issues, whether it's education, youth, housing justice, economic justice, as you had mentioned earlier, and just really opening up my doors so that the more folks feel empowered to speak out and to make a difference.
Wow. That's Rob Abone, folks. Member of the city council of City of Berwyn, representing the 5th Ward, standing for office for his second term. I wish you so much luck and good fortune in your campaign, though I feel you make your own luck. But listen, folks, if you watch this video, this is a story that can play out in your community. Because what Rob is telling us is about community, people coming together and deciding essentially, not just the built environment, like what's gonna be built in their community, but really, which way is it gonna go? And if they don't like the way they're going, they don't want their public money used against them. Is it really is kind of what we're talking about? All right, so thanks again. Any final words for young organizers before we sign off?
Yeah, just keep pushing. I mean, it's possible. I, for myself, you know, I'm not, I'm not, I don't have any special training for this. I've worked most of my life in the nonprofit sector, supporting community members, doing direct service, working with organizations. But you just have to have, you know, sort of two things, really, like the passion to build relationships and connections in your community and the heart, right, to really fight. And if you have those two things and you're working with good people and you're, you know, coming up with solutions together that make sense for your community, you're on the right path and you can make it happen. And so if we could do it in Berwyn, if we can do this with a couple of volunteers, if we can do this on a couple of weeks' notice from this, like, coming out of nowhere and springing up on us in a town where- um, in a town where uh, power is consolidated and, and most folks, there's a couple of people making all the decisions, like you all can do this across uh, the country too. And so um, keep that belief, keep that hope. Hope is a practice. It's not, it's not something that you just throw out there and you're optimistic about how things can change. You just, you have to work at it. Um, but work at it with people you care about, um, and lift each other up and build with each other and, and, and anything's possible.
Brother, I love that. You use two of my favorite words, power and passion. Uh, with, with those things, we can move mountains. Well, that much, folks, that is the, the, the time we have. I thanks to Rob Abone and all your friends and allies. Um, as we say now, in these times, stay safe. Stay sane, stay strong.